Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Millville Board of Selectments meeting, Monday, October 6th, 2014, at 7:00 P.M. Do you join me in standing as President of the League?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberated and just.
We could remain standing, please. A moment of silence to recognize the recent passing of John McNamara, who was a lifelong Millville resident who served on many boards and committees over the years. Our condolences go out to his family and loved ones. Thank you. Thank you to all those who came out over the weekend in support of the Centennial Committee Family Fund Day. A reminder that the town hall will not be, town hall offices will be closed next Monday, October 13th, in observance of Columbus Day. Next Wednesday, October 15th, is the deadline to register the vote for the November 4th election. Please see the town clerk's office for details. Also, at this time, I want to make note of the fact that on or about October 7th, our cable channels are going to go digital. The new cable channel numbers will be 191, 192, and 194. Minutes. Minutes of September 15th, 2014, at 6:00 P.M. That was the workshop meeting with the planning board.
I make a motion. Oh, he can't.
We have a call.
Bob wasn't here.
Jennifer's here. Jennifer, do you read the, look at the minutes?
Yes, I do.
We'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
On the 15th, the 6 o'clock or the 7 or 8?
The 6 o'clock meeting.
I make a motion.
Roll.
Aye.
The minutes of September 15th, at 7:00 P.M., the regular, regularly scheduled Board of Selectments meeting.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of September 15th, at 7:00 P.M.
Thank you. Your second?
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I do have warrants this evening. And I'm happy to report that we will now be back on the schedule of meeting night again. So you shouldn't be getting any phone calls. The first warrant is for payroll in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five hundred, sixty-two dollars and eighteen cents. I have the vendor warrant dated October 6th. The amount of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred, thirteen dollars and eleven cents. And there is one extra warrant that was done later for an even two hundred dollars, but just slipped through the cracks. So it's done separately. And then I have the payroll deductions of the last payroll period in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred, nine dollars and sixty-two cents.
Motion to approve the warrants.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Counselor Adrian. Reports to town officials.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. We don't fight. But friends are welcome.
Looks like your knee is okay.
Good. Thank you.
So I'm Jill Anderson. I'm the outreach coordinator for the Town of Millville at the Millville Senior Center. And I assume that you want to know what's been happening, at least the last six months, possibly the last year. We've been very busy. We received in the spring something called a service incentive grant from the state. And that, we targeted to do outreach to all the seniors in the town. So I had information in that mailing on the disability indicator form. If a person is disabled or might have trouble being evacuated in the event of an emergency or just wants the police and fire departments to know that there's a disabled person living in that residence, then they fill out this form. This is statewide. And so I did include that, information about that, how to fill it out, and offered to help them fill out if they wanted. There was also a brochure on the senior center in our services, our hours and so forth. And there was a brochure also about Tri Valley Elder Services there, the case management agency for this area. So that if you have a problem that's going to involve things like having homemakers come to the house or some other specialized services that we don't offer up at the senior center, Tri Valley is probably the agency that you're going to need to call. If you need Meals on Wheels, for example, Tri Valley is the agency that you need to call. Anyone who has questions about what's the right place to call, certainly call the senior center first and I'll help them make that decision or give them more resource information. Anyway, so there was a brochure on Tri Valley, brochure on us, and the information about the disability indicator form. So almost five hundred of those letters went out. So we are really making an effort to get the word out in the community that we're there. We are open. We do have services. And we can refer them also to other agencies that have services. Our newsletter continues to go out every month. Not all senior centers send the newsletter out twelve months a year. Some only do it ten months and so forth. But our wonderful editor, who is present here tonight, Ellen Bowen, cranks it out along with her volunteers. And we send about three hundred and sixty of them out, mail them out every month also. We have fuel assistance season upon us now. The people who have to reapply, who received fuel assistance in the past, have already, should have already received their renewal information in the mail, the forms that they need to fill out. If anyone needs assistance without, I've already helped five or six seniors that want a little assistance filling out their forms. People who are applying for the first time, are going to be new clients of the fuel assistance program, cannot even get the forms right now. It's, the program doesn't actually technically start until November 1st. They can get the forms from me after the middle of October. So if you think you're going to be applying or you have questions about whether you may even be eligible, you can still call the senior center and I will tell you what documentation to be getting ready. When you do, when you can, come in and we can make an appointment. Or even if you want to do it on your own, go up to Framingham. You have to be interviewed. You can't just say, oh, send me the form and I'll mail it in. That's not how the system works. So again, for fuel assistance, this is for people of all ages in the community. We help the entire community when it comes to fuel assistance. And our phone number, I'll just give it out right now in case someone's listening who's interested in this, is 883-3523. So we are open Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, by the way, for the information of those who might not know that, from 9:00 to 3:30. Open enrollment begins for the seniors in the middle of October and it goes through December 7th. This means that if you're happy with your health insurance, your Medicare plus any supplemental kind of insurance, Medicare D or whatever that you have, if you're happy, if it's working for you, fine, you don't have to do anything. But if you want to look at what you've got, you suspect that there might be other arrangements that would be better for you, then now is the time to do it. This is the one time of year that all people on Medicare can make the changes. People in other certain categories can make changes at other times of year, but this is the time of year. You really ought to look at it. And we have a special program happening at the senior center, October 16th. That's the SHINE program, which means serving health information, needs of elders, I think, something like that. Anyway, it's a program, it's a statewide program, just to counsel people on their health insurance. This very complicated system of health insurance. And we have two wonderful people, Lee and Judy Katz, who come to us once a month to do that. They will be at the senior center on Thursday, October 16th, at 10:30 and give a little presentation on what the changes are this year. Feel free to jump in.
I was just going to add, with open enrollment, many seniors get very comfortable with what they have and it seems to be a very convoluted system. So take advantage of these two people from SHINE. They know the ins and outs. They know what is good for you and what isn't. So they can even help you to really take a look at the cost that you've spent already for this past year on your health insurance and maybe another plan is better for you. Many people are enticed to look at the other plans that are the non-traditional Medicare. But, you know, there are many caveats there that you need to be concerned about. So, you know, if you're looking at some form of rehabilitation at any point, then you're giving that insurer a say over you, whereas traditional Medicare, you can go anywhere. So just be very, very much aware of that. Look at the fine print. And again, when SHINE is there, they can help you with that.
Another program we have coming up, in fact, within about eight days, is the flu shots. Flu shots, again, are for all town residents. The VNA, Salmon VNA comes to Millville and brings the shots with them. This will happen on Tuesday, October 14th. And we have two different sessions. One is from 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning. And we encourage seniors to come at that time, just because we had to divide it up some way. We assumed that at the second session, 5:00 to 7:00, we will get community residents who are working during the day and cannot come in the morning. So we have signed up, almost twenty seniors already, and we anticipate that Salmon VNA will bring enough shots for everybody. And just to let you know, the Millville Senior Center, I do rearranging, the coordinating of this. And then the Board of Health also participates and I think reimburses the VNA, I believe, for the service.
I think everyone should be aware that hospitals are already seeing increase in flu cases. So anybody who is sixty-five or older, it is recommended that they do get the flu shot. Anybody who has any type of a chronic disease process, immunosuppressed, it's always recommended as well for them. So area hospitals are already seeing inpatients because of this. So it's not expected to be an easy flu season.
A couple of weeks ago, we had a crew come through Sheriff Evangelis' office and they did a lot of groundwork around the senior center. I believe they came four different days and did a very good job. And it's certainly a cost savings through the town for us to be able to have that done by inmate volunteers. So we have already thanked the sheriff publicly on television. I'd like to thank the sheriff for sending that crew to us. They also sent us...
Excuse me, people. How do you get in the food section?
You can walk right through here. It's out there on the other side. You can come in, you can just walk right out.
Okay. Sorry about that.
They also sent us...
Go out that door and it's across the parking lot.
Some very nice decorations. Pumpkins and corn stalks that they grew on their property. So senior center looks great if you haven't driven by. If you haven't driven by recently, you might want to take a look. Lois LaFlem and Bob LaFlem did most of the decorating with the items that were given.
And we're on their list for nature as well.
Oh. All the regular classes are continuing and are well attended. I just did some work with figures today and we had like between twelve hundred and thirteen hundred person classes in the twelve months of fiscal year 2014. So for a small town with five hundred seniors, not all of whom come to the senior center, I mean, that was a very good participation rate. We did introduce a new class. We have oil painting now at the senior center a couple of times a month. And that's been enthusiastically received. I know you all want to hear, first, before I get to the van, we have twenty-seven active volunteers working to help run the center. I'm only there nineteen and a half hours, which is taking up a lot with administrative stuff, you know, keeping statistics and communicating with Boston, with the E O E A and everything. So I really rely on the volunteers and they've been great. They run the whole lunch program on Thursday and a lot of other things. We have a volunteer janitor, Robert LaFlem, puts in a lot of hours. Want anything to that?
What about the breakfast program?
Oh, yes, we have a new program that provides breakfast. We, once a week, have a lunch program from Tri Valley Elder Services. But they began a new breakfast program where you can get oatmeal. You can get, it's, everything arrives frozen. So it's a frozen bowl of oatmeal, which you could put in the microwave to heat up, some juice and a muffin. And it is free. So far it is free. They keep telling me it's going to continue to be free. There is a second alternative, which is, they call it a breakfast sandwich. And one has turkey bacon, the other has turkey sausage. For those two, which are delivered with juice, they charge fifty cents. And a few people take advantage of that. But the oatmeal is very popular and it comes in different flavors, mixed berry, cinnamon, apple, plain. We kind of never know what we're going to get. But it's been well received. I think we, we order anywhere from thirty-five to sixty of those breakfasts every week. So, and you can, you can have up to four helpings. So you could, four days a week, have oatmeal if you wanted. Not everybody orders the four, but that's the limit that we've set on it, so.
Oatmeal is the healthy choice.
It's a, yeah, it's a healthy meal. It's a good thing, oatmeal is very good for you. We also, I had a special program on Monday last week from the Office of Disability, for disability from the state. And they brought out GO packs, which are something that you keep in your house in case there's a flood or an extensive power outage or some other kind of disasters, a bad hurricane perhaps. And then you've got something you can pick up and go. It's got your personal information, maybe spare medication if you can put it in there, or at least a list of what you take. It has a radio, it has a flashlight, it has spare water, enough water for four days, and on and on, I could go. Anyway, it's quite an extensive pack. The fellow from Boston brought it out and distributed thirty, thirty-six of them to seniors. So they were quite pleased to get it, it was free of charge. Today, Deputy Chief Furno and Josh, I'm sorry, I don't know his last name, another fireman, came to the center and gave a talk on senior safety in the home mainly. Going around your home, making sure things are safe and, I can't remember too much. They have a new program that will feature in our newsletter next month, but where they will actually do a home visit if you would like them to come in and look around your home and see what things could be improved to make your home safer. And they're hoping to get funding for a second program where they would actually test and replace your smoke alarm. I don't know if that's certain yet, that they're going to get that grant, but they're working on several things in that respect.
So do you have grants on your list? That's one of the things that we were talking about, is identifying more grants that we can apply for with the senior centers. So there's an opportunity where we get emails from E O E A, where they identify grants for us, but we're also on the outlook for those. So I just got one today from our town, so we can take a look at them as well.
It's very limited what we can apply for because we're a municipal line department. Most grants are for nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organizations. So we're trying to figure out some ways that maybe we can obtain a 501(c)(3) designation. Many senior centers have a Friends of group. So that's something we can look at and see whether it might be a possibility.
Our senior club does not function as the Friends of. So they, that's not, they're not a 501...
They are not a nonprofit.
So they don't function that way. So we have to either get a Friends group together for the senior center or we have to try and go that way and look at what options are available to us and then what the cost is for that. Although the Friends group does donate to the center and they do assist in fundraising and that, they're just not labeled that way. So we do need to try and do something along that line.
So last but certainly not least, I brought you colored versions of our brochure and not everybody gets them. The, as you probably all know, we have a van, it is on our property, and we're almost there for having our drivers completely hired and to become Town of Millville employees. I want to get the word out, it's important that people know that this service is going to be available very soon. They need to register. We need anybody who rides the van to be registered and to also have a file of life card that has their medical information. And I have file of life cards at the senior center. I have the form, if somebody is, disabled people can ride this van, you don't have to be a senior. If you have a certified disability and if that means you can't get out of the house to come get these forms, certainly I will mail them to you, call me, 883-3523, and talk to me and let me know what your situation would be, where you go for your medical appointments and so forth. So we can have an idea of what we need to arrange in the way of a schedule for the van. We have two experienced drivers who have driven for a local town and also are familiar with our town's roads and everything. They are fully trained. The state requires that these drivers have three specialized courses and they also need to have had CPR and a few other things, drug and alcohol training. Those drivers are completely trained so that once their paperwork is complete, they'll be good to go. They'll be fine. We have two other people who have also applied, but they're going to need some training before they'll be able to drive.
Wow.
That's it.
I'm really impressed.
Good work. Oh, good.
We thank you, really.
You did a great job.
Any questions from the board?
Well, I assume that you probably utilize, I don't get cable, so I'm assuming that you're utilizing cable to put all this information out.
And then the newsletter's the other way, John, that it all goes out.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, because I used to get the newsletter and I still love getting the newsletter because then I would know when my elderly friends' birthdays were coming up, because I don't memorize all of them. But we used to get one to the household because I had one. So I thought there was a way for someone to make a donation and then get the mailing. Is it, the way it used to be?
No, we didn't make a donation to get the newsletter.
Okay. It used to be non-members could make a, like a donation and then they would get the newsletter.
Well, except any donations, but you don't have to make one.
Always, well. I make sure you know the next mailing.
Do you know where I live? Yeah, no, I actually, I enjoyed reading it. I liked to see what these seniors were doing. And just knowing a lot of the seniors, it was nice to see, you know, some of the photographs and things that were going on, so. Or if anyone else wants to get that newsletter, I suppose they could just call you if they're not...
If anyone's not receiving it that wants it, just call the center and we'll put them on the list.
We usually have a very limited number of copies at the senior center. So if you really want a copy and you haven't gotten on our list yet, you're welcome to come by. All right.
Senior, granting special privileges here. I'd like to sign up for a flu shot next Tuesday.
Thanks. Do you want it in the morning or in the evening?
In the morning.
The phone number is 883-3523 from 9:00 to 3:30 on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays.
It would be great to have all of you guys there for your shots.
I can work, got something coming on.
I don't do flu shots, but that's fine.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sounds good.
First public phone.
Oh, I just have one question. When is your next meeting, Counselor Adrian? When do you meet?
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth?
This Wednesday.
Wednesdays. At 6:30 at the senior center. Okay. Thank you. So people interested in...
Bingo.
Okay, thank you. All right, sorry. That was on my list.
Beyond the correspondence, we received a letter from the school district over the signature of Vasid Desai, principal of Millville Elementary. And basically, district is expressing their thanks to the Millville Board of Selectment, Finance Committee, Mrs. Coffin, as well as the citizens of Millville for their commitment in resolving the water situation at Millville Elementary School. And as of October 1st, 2014, bottled water will not be necessary due to the latest test results.
Wow. I know.
We literally, I was telling Helen, we got this email from Bob, what, the 20th, or the 26th? I don't know when they received that letter. And we got the email from Helen that afternoon saying we're good to go. And this letter came home in the backpacks that afternoon. So I think they were just sitting on it and hoping for it, because it came home the same day that we were informed. All of the parents of Millville were informed on the same day. So that's good.
See, this is basically an announcement for the select board with the, on, let's see, the 25th of October. There's a select, MMA Selectments Conference with TRICOM. I just want to inform the board, I did get an email on this and I signed up, so I'm going to attend that. I found the legislative meeting occurred on October 3rd, very informative and well worth attending. I learned a lot and there's a lot of connection to what's going on in the Commonwealth that is common to some of the things we encounter in Millville.
Do you think that we could put you on the members forum for the next time? I can't go, this is, it occurs on the weekend and I'm not available. But do you think we could do a members forum and you could kind of give us a scoop on what you hear and learn there?
Sure.
In our meeting?
If you're interested in some of the topics that came out of, what I learned, some of the common issues were things like Chapter 90 and the funding of Chapter 90. Representative Kears indicated that, you know, it could be touch and go in terms of there are changes in the administration that some of the reserves that they have for Chapter 90 could go away. And it could be as much as two million, two hundred... could go away and it could be as much as two million, two hundred million dollars. So this is kind of an eye opener for towns like ourselves that, you know, you pursue the chapter ninety, get going with chapter ninety. I met with Ann Goby, she's the chair of the Joint Committee on Environment and her two top, she's, she's really an environmentalist. And she supports electric aggregation and it was mentioned that Lowell was just signed on with the Hampshire County of Governments and we have a thing there on it. And it was also noted that the Department of Public Utilities is supporting that, but it took Lowell a year to get through that whole process in that the Attorney General tied the whole thing up in terms of the profit margin that the suppliers had on it and it's like, you know, a mill of a cent. And, but it didn't consider the savings to the end user. D P, the DPU was in favor of it, but the Attorney General held it up for a year. I have more, but we can do that another time, I think. Later on, we're going to be talking about rock salt. The, the police chief in Charlton talked about that in his town. And he talked about the, you know, the excess amounts that go down on the road and the damage that's going to the roads. He feels partly responsible because they're the ones who call out for sanding and the like. And he also mentioned that the effect and the damage to private wells in the area. So we've got to be watchful of how much salt we're putting down. And we're going to be signing a, or maybe approving the contract this evening for our salt contract.
Well, your mixture is based on your, the highway surveyor and the contractor. Do you know what I mean? Because the salt is delivered and the sand is delivered. Then our sanding company will come in and they mix it so they can do, then they make a new pile whether it's, you know, two to one, three to one, you know, what, what is the ratio? So maybe there needs to be some thought process and to, as a community, you know, make sure we're safe and, you know, cost effective. And having more than one pile.
And seems to me somebody's got to monitor that distribution because I, I, I'm in amazement every winter of what I see out my front door. It's just, it's just crazy. Salting a bit of snow, I'm sure that's going to do, and, and good.
Well, the problem lies.
Well, then you, then, then wasn't there a comment made that certain people were salting and sanding and they didn't really need to do it and they're going up and down streets?
Well, the problem, as a, as a former daughter of a highway surveyor, or still a daughter, just former highway surveyor. The, the problem is, is when you're getting, this is how it was explained to me, okay? So when you're getting a snowstorm, it's going to be twelve inches, right? If you go out and you sand within the first, you know, dusting, because you want one to keep the road safe, what you're doing is you're providing a safety layer.
You're providing a base.
But you're also just pushing that aside an hour later.
Right.
So there comes that fine balance of keeping the road safe and make sure, it, it's, and it also comes down to timing. Is it three in the morning? You can kind of get away with not sanding. Two o'clock in the afternoon or rush hour, you're going to have to throw the sand down. And that's when people say, well, why are you sanding? So it really is a, a balance. You know, if, when do you do it, when do you don't do it, you know, you have to make sure, you know, that it's safe for people to get home. So I mean, and there's a lot of, I think a lot of it's probably driven to complaints coming in and Helen can probably attest that her mailbox or email might light up certain times of the year, you know, certain, when does a snow come, snowstorm come through, you know, and some people have environmental concerns. Which, you know, why are you standing if you're pushing it off and it's going down the drain? So, you know, I, I think every town struggles with that. You always hear this town is the worst, this town is the best because they all have different policies in place and how they handle it. So I mean.
Personally, this, this past year, it's the greatest I've ever seen in terms of the damage to the vegetation on the sides of my road. I had a big girl up there, it's all yellow.
I'd like that for my poison ivy.
Oh, they could poison ivy in a crab desk.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I mean, we could ask the, I mean, we award the contracts and maybe we should find out from the highway surveyors.
I think we need to.
Who's monitoring that mixing of product.
I think we need to watch that.
Yeah, we do have a part-time guy on.
Yeah, watch that and plow, you know, my nickname, my guy, my neighbor, Sparky, you know? Something tells me if your plow is creating sparks, you're probably all set. So. But Brian can't be everywhere.
Well, that's the whole thing. Moving on, if I come up with anything, I'll.
Maybe with the, maybe we could invite Brian into either a workshop prior to our meeting to address some of these things at one of our future meetings before it snows and see what's going on. It doesn't have to be during a regular meeting. I'm willing to come in, you know, six thirty prior to a meeting and, you know, unless he wants to come during a scheduled meeting.
Yeah, I just, probably would not be a bad idea.
Before the season starts that we're all on the same page, or at least I'm just on the same page, but he's offering.
I, I personally don't think he needs to come here at six thirty. I think we could do it a regular forum, you know, because he's only going to say, how much is he going to save, Jennifer?
No, I know.
I mean, the only reason why I say that, for me, sometimes it's very tough being here at six, six thirty in the evening. You know, I, it just, and I don't want to miss anything, so.
I just want people to feel welcome and not, you know.
I understand.
So whatever, I kind of feel like whatever they're comfortable in delivering their message, whether to us or to the whole town, that they should be given that opportunity. It's all public meetings, so. And all public record anyways. Whatever works for everyone.
Opinion of the board? Um, we heard from you. Six thirty, seven o'clock, I, I, you know, we heard from you, so better for you for seven, so why don't we make it just seven?
It's fine.
It makes it easier for me.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
The chief, I don't know if he's still occupied, but if we could, do you want to do the rock salt? If we do, no?
Uh, we had one resignation the board needs to accept.
We have the resignation of Mr. John Alara. We have a letter here saying resignation, letter of reservation stating, please accept, this is my official resignation from participation on the Municipal Center Building Committee effective immediately. I am no longer able to remain on this committee due to personal circumstances. Sincerely, John Alara.
Or should I accept?
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm sorry, I just got to put you on my plate.
No. Thank you for giving me time for the, I think the first part was kind of the, the beginning, you know what I mean?
Maybe first.
Next on the agenda is the police policies and procedures.
Executive Secretaries.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I actually have nothing this evening, so. So the chief. The chief will make up for that.
Yo, chief, you in deep thought over there? Okay.
We're waiting for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening. Policies and procedures.
Yes. As I mentioned previously, it's my practice to rewrite, revisit policies and procedures over the three years. We completed all of the policies, created maybe five to ten more policies and made revisions to older policies. I submitted those to the union within, they had a requirement to send them back to me within ten days with revisions. They didn't do that, so that, I understand is they accept the policies and procedures. I also forwarded a copy to the Board of Selectmen for your review. This is a courtesy, if you'd like to take a look at what we do and how the policies are written, that's why I gave it to you. They're pretty straightforward. As you know, a long time ago, we had a few, now we have many. And as years go on, we create more, as the law changes, more policies and procedures are required. And in the future, what I will do to make it easier on the Board of Selectmen, I will give you a copy of the new policies every right or any policy that's been changed. Otherwise, every other policy will remain the same. Make it, just to make it easier, I understand it's very time involved when you look at some of these policies. They're very lengthy, you could read them for two, three weeks, so I understand that's real.
Yes, you can.
Do you read it?
Is it, is it the practice that they calmly review them throughout the year? Are, are there times or opportunities where you have to look at them throughout the year?
There are. Law changes quite often, new statutes have developed, the MPTC may change the rules. When that happens, we have to revisit the policy and make the changes as needed. So we don't, on a yearly basis, look at every single policy just because we want to read them again. They'll stay in place until I realize the changes occurred and then I'll revisit the policy and change it. I did read through all of them. I didn't study them as an attorney or the like. But as, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I'm ready to sign them. Provided that, you know, there is an ongoing process of review. Right. You know, the, the reason for policies and procedures, it's really all about liability. That's what governs the police department, to make sure we do everything correctly. Those policies are not my own creation, many of them most come from the MPTC or the Chiefs Committee. So that's what we, you know, adopt throughout the state. They're all from certified police departments, so some we copy and paste and we just tweak it to our own police department. We never, very seldom do we reinvent the wheel, but we do on occasion if it's unique to Millville. An example would be the pursuit policy. Generally, that's the policy that's accepted throughout the Commonwealth. But we may tweak it to the way we want to read it, and we've done that. So those, you can be sure that most of those, if not all of those policies, come from accredited source. So if there's ever litigation against something we've done, we've had a policy in place. If an officer simply fails to follow the policy, then that'd be a different situation to deal with. Otherwise, it was a good guide for the department.
I have just a couple of things, and I apologize because I didn't write down the policy number, but it was within the first ten. There was mention of the town charter or bylaw and bylaw. Millville doesn't have a charter.
Okay.
So it was in one of the first ten that I wrote, because I, you know, I was like.
Yeah.
And then afterwards, I was like, oh, I really should write these numbers down of things that I had, but I'll.
You know what policy it was, number?
I'll check. It was, like I said, it was in the first group of ten that I read, because I tried to do ten at a time. I'll check for that.
Yeah, like I mentioned, a lot of those policies are written for municipalities that have a charter.
Right.
Or not, and the word or should be in there.
Yep.
So it would still apply, so I just have to read it and be sure of it.
Yeah. And then the one on the communications.
Yep.
You know, went, went into like the tapes and the viewing and picking up and audio, phone calls. Now, is that all within our contract that we have with Mendon or, you know what I mean? Because we signed a contract with Mendon based on services and what we have, and then we have a policy of how that, what that looks like. Is there a place where those two meet up and are appropriately, you know, so it's not like, well, we're reading the contract and we're reading this, you know, I just want to make sure that there's, because we have that intimacy.
No, I understand that. The bottom line is, under the open records law, ninety-nine percent of what you're speaking about, they have to maintain it anyway. The tapes, the recordings, all of that's on a database and we, we keep it.
Okay.
For a period of time and then they would cycle it out. So generally, when we need a tape or a recording, we'll know within the first couple of days if there's any type of litigation or any type of court case, we know. We still record our phone messages as well in Millville and we also have the ability to listen to Mendon in the recordings. So it's all on a server, all on a database and it doesn't go anywhere. Eventually, it'll be purged, but they'll follow the law when they do purge it.
Okay. What's the other thing? Oh, because we got all the policies, what is the policy of your officers? Now, they get the sixty-nine policies.
Right.
You know, are they reading, are they reading them, are they signing off on them? What, what is the accountability to know that they're, they are informed of what we need or what we want?
In the past, I created a binder for each officer. It's really not the most efficient way to do business because we cut down so many trees. The binders are that big and we have so many people. So now, we give everyone a disc and the information's on the server as well. And then I give them a sheet that contains the heading and number of every policy. After they read each policy, they sign off on the policy. When they complete all of the policies, they give me a sheet, it goes in their file. Everyone has done that. Everyone's read or has claimed to read all of the policies and they've signed off on each one.
And they're ongoing quizzes.
So case in point, if they did something that was, that opposes a policy, it would be on them because they would have signed off on that policy. So there is a guarantee that they at least signed off on it.
Right.
And hopefully, they followed through and they read the entire policy.
All right, those were the only questions I had.
So I'm to take in a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the police policies as written.
Seconded.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else, chief, for you also?
No, can I stay here for the, the open part of the meeting or are you up to me now?
The, it's.
Is your public forum a police matter?
No, just informational.
Okay.
I don't have a problem taking his side of the vote, he's the only gentleman, the only person here.
Go ahead. All right, I did receive the results from the traffic study. That was.
Police related.
I, I did request that they expedite my results and I received them very quickly.
Is that the most things that were around around?
Yes. We requested six different locations. I did receive all the results today. I apologize, I wanted to give them to Helen today so she could give you a copy for your own and I'll make sure she gets them tomorrow. Somewhat surprised at the results, but not really. We'll start with Central Street at the bridge. We have over six thousand cars a day. That's a large number.
Really?
It's such a small town. And that was, in this survey, I really wish they would have done it over the weekend as well, but it was a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday survey. And the number for Central Street was actually sixty-two hundred vehicles over the bridge. And that's a lot of vehicles traveling on, on Central Street.
Yeah.
Then I had one sip on Ironstone Street and I was surprised at that particular result. I never would have thought we had two thousand cars a day traveling on Ironstone Street. Obviously, that's because the cut through from North Smithfield or Millville and Mendon to Blackstone to get over to one forty-six. So we have two thousand cars. That's, that's certainly amazing. Chestnut Hill, twenty-one hundred cars a day travels, traveling on Chestnut Hill Road. One twenty-two on the Uxbridge side was twenty-six hundred vehicles and a similar number on the Blackstone side. So the bottom line is, we have. So the bottom line is, we have a host of vehicles coming into this town, going to different destinations. And I was just surprised by the Central Street. And from one other observation, from North Smithfield, on the Central Street side, it was roughly about eighteen hundred cars. So when you add up the vehicles coming in from Rhode Island and coming in from Ironstone, and other locations crossing the bridge, you get that sixty-two hundred figure for cars. So.
Do you have a north-south number on, uh?
I do.
On Central?
It was thirty-one hundred cars southbound and three thousand forty-nine cars northbound.
Wow.
That's what it is.
Yeah, yeah. And that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, that was only Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. But they, they forecast an average of almost sixty-two fifty for the entire week per day. So that leads me to my next problem, as I made statements earlier regarding Ironstone Street, to stop the excessive trucks traveling through town. South, um, Uxbridge, Uxbridge has been very fortunate, they've attracted an asphalt plant and a couple of new shipping terminals, um, right on the very edge of South Uxbridge, and they're all traveling through Millville.
What's the new business going up there?
That's an extension of the asphalt plant. On the other side near BJ's.
Mm-hmm, they just cleared it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Extension of the asphalt plant.
Wow, I bet the people in North Smithfield are very excited about that.
Yeah, no.
That's gonna, uh, honestly, I drive one forty-six in the morning, um, north and windows closed every morning, I'm like, did I, like, you know, is that my car? Cause they can smell something, um, but you can, I mean, the smell in that area from the asphalt is horrible, and I'm sure if the wind blows. I mean, Millville's not that far from that location, cause I see them clearing it, so I know we can't do anything about it, but.
Well, what, what Millville has to understand is, the plant, this is the first season it's in operation. That plant is only gonna get bigger and produce more asphalt, which means more trucking through Millville. It does nothing for Millville, we have no economic, economic benefit.
But you also have the air quality, like if you can smell on one forty-six, I mean, you've got that whole buffer of property, and then they're set down behind the old auction house, so I mean, there's quite a distance, and you can smell that.
Sure.
In the, and I'm sure that's probably when they're doing most of their business, but you can smell that.
Well, my main concern is, you know, the safety of the community and the road of Ironstone Street, it's really not built, engineered to withstand that type of trucking. So I did file a complaint with Mass Highway, and it kinda fell on DeFayis, because what they told me was, we need at least ten percent of those vehicles traveling on Ironstone on a daily basis to include trucks. And then they would give us the exclusion I'm looking for.
Mm-hmm.
Well, ten percent of twenty-one hundred is, you know, two hundred and ten vehicles, we don't have that many trucks. So now, I'm taking a different direction on the safety part of it. We've had two accidents on the corner of Ironstone and Central Street. It's because when vehicles traveling over the bridge, taking a right-hand turn, they have to swing way left towards the post office to make the turn onto Ironstone. So that's really not acceptable. Uh, plus, the bus stop has been moved from Central, uh, Hope, down to the vacant lot near the post office because of DCR construction and the bike pathway. So given that attack, I spoke to send tomorrow, and it looks like either way, I'm gonna get a sign up. Until that happens, I've been stopping, uh, most of the trucks, cause they're from one or two companies, not fifty different vehicles. They're the same vehicle over and over again, I've spoken to the owners of every company. Kimball Construction, Kimball Lot of Blackstone, they've been very understanding, they lo- no longer travel on Ironstone, they go down one twenty-two, which they should do.
Right.
And make the turn.
Yeah.
And the road, the rules of the road really require trucks like that to stay on the main roads, not to cut through small towns. Another trucking company, I spoke to the owner today, um, I don't know how compelling my argument was, but I more or less told him in the future, uh, if you continue to use Ironstone, unfortunately, it's a violation of the law to cross the center lane and go into another lane of traffic. If we witness that, we're gonna be given violations. So if you read between the lines, um, I'll take care of that problem with that company, in a lawful way. So I expect, just those two companies alone will eliminate most of the trucking, until a new trucking company comes in. And that's what's happening with the asphalt plant, they'll get a large contract, say on four ninety-five, and from a new trucking company, they'll map it out, they send it right through Millville. So that's why we need the signs and advertised, um, not traveling that way.
You can't put weight, you're patient, you can't put weight.
You can, that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna try for like a thirty-five, thirty-five thousand pound weight limit. That's gonna allow the basic pickup truck and smaller dump truck to travel through town, but the tri, tri-wheels, tri-axle.
Yeah.
Vehicles will not be, and those are the ones that, you know, we wait, how many years in Millville wait for a new bridge? Well, if that type of trucking continues over this bridge, uh, you know, how long is that bridge gonna last? Cause there's no weight limit on that bridge, so I can't enforce it that way. I wish there was, I called Mass Highway and said, why is there no weight limit on the bridge? They said, well, it's a newly constructed bridge, we don't need a weight limit, cause everything that travels on the road should be able to cross over the bridge. I get it, and so that's why there's no weight limit.
Have you worked with the asphalt plant to tell them?
I did, he was, uh, I went to see the owner.
He willing to kinda put the word out to?
He did, uh, his trucks in particular, no longer travel on Ironstone. So just a word of mouth has really stopped most of the people traveling on that street, especially after today. But that's not gonna stop the future trucks or companies that get these contracts.
Right.
They, I see some I've never recognized before, come through town. So we're gonna have to put up the signs if we really wanna eliminate it. And it's not eliminating business, they serve no purpose as a town in Millville, other than destroy our town.
Right.
Destroy our streets and make it unsafe.
Right.
And the quality of life for the people who live in that area. So we'll do what we have to do to take care of that problem. And that was it, and once again, just to repeat, DCR, they did stop and see me this week. The bike path is going to, um, start within the next couple of weeks. And what I was told, they're gonna build, actually, a road that goes from that bike path, from that parking lot directly to the bridge, sixty feet. And they'll construct the bike path, they'll fix the bridge, then they'll bring it down to ten feet, put a bike path, and plant grass on both sides. And that's it, we'll be ready to go, they expect that to take two years. So, and that's, that's, that's a good, in my opinion, economic, uh, improvement for the town, it should bring some new people in, maybe help the town a little bit.
Maybe we can do something to.
I think so, I think so, when you look at the traffic, how many people travel through this town? There's opportunity in this town to develop economic areas, cause you have the people in town, or you have the people traveling through town. So there's no need not to have businesses in this area to flourish.
Right.
And make this town, you know, grow, in a good way.
So there are some choice lots around here, it could be, on Central Street and.
And that's why, since you gave me the opportunity to speak, I'd still like to push for, um, the mug pop. This would be something that takes place with that building, uh, so in my opinion, it's a public safety issue, uh, it's a fire issue.
Chief, we were gonna bring up, I had on the agenda workshop to bring that up for discussion again. Uh, we, I, we wanna do that with a full board.
Okay.
Okay?
That's why, that's, uh, we'll have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you work that game yesterday?
I was there.
I was frozen today.
Mrs. Wayne.
Um.
Wait, did I miss something?
Hmm?
Yes, I've missed something.
Yep, no business.
Uh, the rock, uh, salt bid. Did you head up to the look at it? I've got an increase around forty percent, but I think we're fortunate, Chicago, uh, costing people a hundred percent.
Wow.
Because of the scarcity of rock salt.
I once got a lesson on rock salt too, about the color, some of it comes from Peru, so it depends on the color of your rock salt.
Is this the pink of a?
The pink, yeah, it's the pink and the white, yeah, it de- yes. What was that, uh, price last year?
Forty.
Forty-nine?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, so we're looking at.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three.
Yeah, just about thirty percent increase. According to NPR, it's just because of the, uh, high demand and the limited resource, uh, source. Okay.
Not much we can do about it, we need it. So I make a motion to what the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen rock salt bid to Eastern Minerals of, for sixty-three dollars per ton, delivered or picked up in accordance with the bids received by the town of Shrewsbury?
Seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Roll.
Aye.
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 I'd be asking for, um, a vote to close the special town meeting law at this time. Can I hear a motion?
So moved, seconded.
Roll.
Aye.
How many articles do we have at this point submitted?
Um, I have to take a look at the zoning articles to see if they're all gonna be different.
Oh, yeah.
But I received four different things from the planning board, um, and then we just have a couple of budgetary adjustments, and that's it.
Any major budgetary adjustments?
No, nothing huge, other than the, um, well, the Norfolk Aggie.
Right.
Uh, we have a new student who was transferred in from another town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'll have to adjust that, but nothing major, otherwise.
Um, we did get an email in regards, that, that they met with the Board of Selectmen on the seventh about the energy, the Hampshire.
Yeah, so that's the, uh, elec- electrical aggregation, uh.
Is that something that might be?
I'm going to include it, um, and when the board meets.
For us to research it?
Yeah, the board can, can certainly vote to strike it.
Because I, I, I do know that with the increase of National Grid's announcement, people are kinda like scrambling and looking to see. We actually on Saturday had a, uh, next step living, but they also did like, um, solar panels Saturday at the community event. And there was constantly someone there, and they were constantly talking, cause I think people are starting, you know, to say, what can I do differently in order to save some money, so I think if this is something that will.
Yep, this will.
Open that conversation, it might, it might not be worth it, but it's worth us looking at it, to see if it's a possibility.
The, uh, there was a subject of conversation at the meeting that we had on Friday.
Right.
And, uh, you know, it's supported by the state and the DPW, and it, it's just a free market kinda thing, I mean, it just makes it more competitive.
Mm-hmm.
Rates, and, uh, I did some calculations on my rates, and, uh, you know, this latest increase is gonna be significant.
Yeah, I mean, they're saying, they're saying thirty-five dollars to an average customer, but you know, when I get my energy report, I also run a full household. Um, you know, my neighbors are here and I'm here, so, you know, th- these guys are hitting thirty-five, and for other people with larger homes or more things going on. You know, I mean, I have a sun pump that runs from January to March, I mean, I can't, can't afford water in my basement either. So I'm, and, and I'm sure there's other people in town that have things going on too, that they have to, you know, um, you know, our elderly on, on those oxygen machines. That is a lot of money to run per month. So I mean, we have, we have everyone with different situations, and I think we need to at least give them options, if they wanna look at other companies to provide their service. There are some out there, you'll sometimes receive things in the mail that says you can look at this company to provide your supplier.
Right.
But not, you st- you're still under National Grid, but you're getting it from somewhere else, but.
You're getting the electricity, but, uh.
Right.
From that, from my reviews of my, my own bills, it's, it's not only the, um, cost of, um, a kilowatt hour, it's the cost of delivery and the transmission of the power, it's including that.
Yeah, you gotta love that, huh?
Yeah, you know, those costs have increased, the National Grid did it from two years ago to, to last year, uh, it went up over twenty percent. Those, those costs, those additional costs.
I mean, I'm not into saying our town needs one thing, I don't wanna base, but I think our residents need options.
There's, there's one thing I might caution you on though, um, being a senior citizen, I get calls all the time, and they ask me, how much do you spend for your electricity? Or that kinda thing, I'll give you a better rate, and I say, how much? And I always go back and say, would they give, when they throw, shoot a number at me, I say, I can do better than that, you know, and they get all upset. But I think those are just scams or.
Yeah.
They, they're just independent agents, they're gonna get a little piece that they can flip you over.
Right.
Kinda thing.
Mm-hmm.
I, I'd rather, you know, maybe get involved with, you know, um, Hamp- uh.
The Hampshire.
Hampshire County, you know, uh, when things, when Lowell signs up, you know, to work with them and buy their electricity from.
Yep.
It's a little bit safer.
Yeah, like I said, I don't wanna, I don't wanna tie anybody into anything, but I just wanna be able to provide them options.
You have options to, to move out of that, if you, if you're not satisfied with it.
I think we just, I think we need more information, I'd like it to see it on there and then we can cut it if need be.
It, might even be worthwhile to have a gentleman come in and, and make a presentation to town meeting.
I'd ra- yeah, I'd rather see it to us first, you know what I mean? I don't want someone coming in and, and us not being informed on it either.
Well, they, they came in, in, in July.
I, I don't remember last week, Joe. I mean, I'll Google it, I'll look at it, I'll see what I can remember, I'll, I can even pull up our meeting on YouTube and refresh my memory on it, but, you know.
Well, she was here, she might've been camping.
July seventh.
I was camping, thank you, John.
I knew that, I knew.
I was, I was camping, I meant, yes.
She was camping with the mud.
Yes, and the dust, and the mud, and the hurricane, and the campground with no campground.
So be it, okay, uh. You, uh, you, you're on the agenda, Jennifer.
Oh, yeah, well, I just want, I just wanna get, I think we need to, um, I'm not a fan of email, I know I've said it a hundred times. Email takes the, um, the voice of the, of the, the tone of the reader, not the tone or the intent of the writer. Um, I know in the past, we've had a few emails, you know, come and go through our department, through other department heads, back and forth. I, I just wanna get a, get a handle on that, like, do we have, and Helen will know, um, a procedure in place as to, you know, like, you send it out to all of us, so I'm assuming we're seeing all, all at the same time, you know, um. I think we need to converse through email, but I think we also need to be cautious through email too.
You, you can't.
I mean, how many times can Mr.?
Yeah, but if she said, if Helen sends something else to all five of us.
Yeah.
That's fine, we can't talk about it back and forth with email, because it's a national violation.
No, I know, oh, and you see, my response is, is next to nothing typically, unless you really get fired.
I will, I will respond to it at all.
And I might put two sentences down, you know, just like yes, no, you know, or I just send it back. But I'm even talking like, I, I think this has been an issue, not just through Helen or our department, but other departments. You know, I think sometimes things are, um, misinterpreted, I think. I, I personally rather see an email saying, per our phone conversation, and then outline whatever was discussed. I think we're losing something by shooting out emails, because people are taking it, reading it the wrong way, and it's causing problems. I was over at the, um, this summer at a meeting, trying to fix something that was sent through email. And I'm not saying it's just Helen, um, you know what I mean, I'm, I'm saying it goes out and then the people, a group or a committee or a board or a, a department responds back to one another.
They flip it.
And sometimes the tones are different, do you know what I'm saying? We've had our building inspected, I mean, I, all I can think of is how many times can I get an email from Mr. Vega that says, boy, I wish he, that they wish they could do that over again. You know what I mean, and it's true, because you, you type and you send, and then, I just, I don't know how to handle that. I, and we can't refrain from people.
That's, that's very, that, that's very tough, Jennifer.
But it's, it's breaking down the communication in the departments and the cohesiveness of people working together, and it causes people to butt heads. And we straight frame back and not have an open dialogue with one another, that to me is a problem.
Yeah, I don't know how you.
When I get the bit in the air that says, well, you know, so and so this, and I know we can't stop that, but I think we can promote a better, um, communication and dialogue amongst each other that's positive. And I know we can't tell people what's right and what not to write.
Right.
But I think there needs to be an overall.
I think the only way that we can really nip something like that or have a better understanding is that when somebody comes to our executive secretary, Helen, and says something like this, and it starts getting a little bit built up, I think what they need to do is bring it in front of this board on a meeting so we can discuss it. That's the only way we can really, you can't discuss it in an email, and you know that.
No, I'm not saying I want to.
But the thing is, is you're right.
I wanna stay away from discussing it in emails.
Right, it gets, it gets torn around, and it's, the people word it differently, and they start using capital letters, cause they're mad and this and that. Whatever, however, the floor matters, I think what it says is, what our executive secretary should do, and it's only a suggestion, is she turn around and say to that individual who's doing this, bring it in front of the board, or I will bring it in front of the board and we will discuss it as a whole. That way, there's no violations, and everybody can put their two cents in, and it's an equal playing field, that's my suggestion.
I mean, email is my situation, I mean, it's very tough to take a phone call if you're on a plane, right?
Absolutely, Bob.
Or late at night when I finally get free, and I just try to catch up on things, but to your point, John, I am way okay with just saying, you know, let's bring it in front of the board, and let's just, well, all five of us, John.
Or, let me ask you this, cause I don't know, so I'm just gonna throw out, out there. As a selectman of this town, if we do have a thing and I see it, can I make my opinion right back just to the executive secretary only? Because I think any other way would be a violation, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so if you have something to say, Bob, you're away, you're in wherever doing your, uh.
John, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the way we're responding, I think we're pretty good about that.
No, 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 I understand, no, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying is, I hear what you're saying, and sometimes you like to say something, but you gotta be very careful, like you said, Jennifer, and like Bob being traveling, just taking Bob from, uh, doing his, his workload and this and that, he's not in town. And he sees the email go across and it start getting, how you would say, ugly, and Bob just says, gee, how can I answer this to the, you can't. But if Bob can express his opinion through the executive secretary, so the next time we have a meeting, and Bob's not there, or I'm not there, or whatever. Helen can say, well, one of the concerns on one of the selectmen is, here's his take on that. So that way, you know, it's, it's out there, I mean.
I also, and I, I wish Roland was here, you know, I also think that we should be able to say, and it happened once before, and the town moderator was part of the email chain, and he said, this needs to stop, do you recall that?
I do, I do that.
Right, I remember that.
This needs to stop, and we need to discuss this, and I was like, voice of reason comes through. I mean, is that something that, I am one of five. So if I say, stop this email, that's one of five. Helen, or another department, or a head, or someone else who's elected even, could say, I don't care what she thinks about my email, and, and rightfully so. I'm not going to stop, you know, going back and forth. So, you know, is it a matter of three of us? Cause you can't do it that way either, I mean, is it, you know, the judgment of the person? I mean, when, when does this, when does the accountability of all those people involved? Cause we've, I mean, I've been here at this table almost three years, I've been in the other departments, I've been friends of people in other departments who've gotten emails and arguments with, you know, other people. So, I've seen emails, um, so it's been more than three years that this kinda occurs. So how do we address it? And say, this is not appropriate behavior for our boards, our committees, the people who are working here? I don't, I don't know, that's why I'm, that's what I'm asking.
I don't see how you can mandate that, my, my feeling is that, uh, you're accountable to yourself, and you need to, you know, I just read an article recently that, uh, like you're composing, when you do an email, don't just write it and send it off. Think about it, and, uh, rewrite it if you have to, I don't know if you read the same article yet.
No, but it's, it's something I do, right? If I'm, if I'm writing something, at night I'll say to myself, you know what, don't send that. Sleep on it, wake up tomorrow, let me say, you know, go back and read it, gee, something like, you know? So, sometimes just sitting on it, and, don't, don't let.
Sometimes you make a mistake, you get the emotion, and you, you can't, uh.
No, I. I've probably been victim of it myself, I've probably done it myself, said something and later said, oh, boy, I really kinda should've rethought that, you know? And maybe that's why I don't like email. I just don't, you know, I mean, is it something that we just keep in the back of our brains, and when we do reviews, or we do appointments, that I say, well, you know what? You, this person wrote five emails last year, I didn't like, and I'm not up for appointing them next year. Seriously, I mean, there, there needs to be, I think people should be, and I'm not saying they have to be dragged in between, for the whole board. I think sometimes if there is something that's so, it, it, cause you know, in the past, we've had some that have gone back and forth multiple times, volleys of, um, you know, he said, she said, um, versions of what's going on, and usually the truth is somewhere in the middle, as they always say. So, I mean, how do we, you know, how do we make?
Well, I see, I think if we see that going on, I think we all, at that point, and I think we're getting better at that, right? We're getting better, like, hey, let's, let's take a timeout, let's, let's take a timeout, yeah? Cause some people just cannot, you, you could be as clear as day, my boss, example, I could say, the, the sky is blue, he'll come back. What are you talking, what are you talking, it's gonna be cloudy later, or what are you trying to imply, like, what? You know, and I'll tell him to call me, he, he's a, he's a call me guy, you gotta, you gotta talk to him on the phone, so. If we see something that's getting a little off track, I think it's kinda best like, all right, let's, let's call a, let's call a timeout.
Yeah.
And, and bring it in, and discuss.
That's what I'm saying, it has to stop.
Yeah.
But it also, but it also is that we are a, a board of five, so me telling somebody, I don't like what they're writing, doesn't hold any merit or any, it's not an official. They can say, well, Jen doesn't like it, but, you know, that's just one person.
Yeah, but you could say, my opinion, Jen's opinion, like, you know what, we sh- we should probably table this.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think enough, it's gone back and forth via email, let's bring it in, to, to, does everybody agree, I don't know.
No, because like Jen said, you know, she sees it.
Or just a conversation, like, set up a meeting and talk, or have, you know, have a third person present to, to help facilitate the conversation if it's going. You, I just, I, I don't think everything needs, you know, here, I just think it needs dialogue rather than back and forth. I mean, sometimes I, I have in the past year gotten two emails put into my mailbox, printed off and shoved to my mailbox. Like, what am I supposed to do with this? One, you don't tell me who you are that gave it to me, cause it's just the email, so it could be just typed up by anyone, you know, it was, I wasn't in the chain link.
You know, there's something, if there's something I gotta say about that, Jennifer.
Oh, no, I know.
If they can't put their name on the paper, it goes in the garbage.
John, and that's why, and that's why I never came here, that's why it never came here, is because, you know what I'm saying? I would never, anybody could type up something and say that Bob wrote it, and give me a tight piece of paper, um, you know? But, I think, I think we need something, cause I think a lot of times when we have problems, it's, it's systematic of, of the, the role of conversation that we have with boards and committees. You know, we keep saying, you know, we wanna be, you know, every, well, the school committee uses transparent, 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 and then sometimes we turn around and, you know, we're not fully aware of what's transpiring here.
That's why you need to bring it in, in, in front of the board and talk to, I mean, some of it, you just, it's not even worth bringing in front of the board because it's just ridiculous. It's kindergarten stuff, as far, as I, as I would see it.
Right.
And I, I wouldn't even wanna waste this board's time with some of the.
Right.
The, the crap that goes on.
No, but what it does, John, is it builds a, 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 a work environment that's not productive, and it becomes hostile and angry.
Right, so that's why a certain thing we need to talk about.
And we've seen that over the years with some individuals.
But, but then again, if, if you have an issue like that, and you wanna discuss it, uh, it has become an agenda item.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's, that's why when one of the emails came through, I said, put me on for the, for.
That's the only, that's, right. That's the only safe way, I know.
Cause I want, you know, how do we, how do we want to, you know, I don't have a problem just sending an email back to the person, or the two people, you know, or the three people, whoever's emailing back and forth and say, I wish for you to stop this emailing and, and, you know, engage in conversation. I don't have a problem doing that, but I, I think it, I don't think it helps.
Yeah, but see. Yeah, but see, with something like that, Jennifer, I, I'm, I'm, this is only my take on it, I'm a little leery about even sending somebody back, cause now I'm corresponding with them.
Mm-hmm, no.
Is that a violation? I mean, you're not supposed to be doing emails.
I think just saying, stop the emails because they're inappropriate, is an appropriate response.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Time, time.
Just.
Time to bring it in.
It's a fine line, I guess, I don't know. We can't discuss, we can't throw emails amongst ourselves, that's, that's a big no, that's just having a discussion.
Individually.
Uh, you can't have.
Right, everybody you can, all right?
No, just the opposite.
No, no, just the opposite.
You can't, you can't be in a quorum. So, you could speak one-on-one with each other, or you could speak one of you to me, but not all five.
Or three, anything that could sit in a quorum.
Right, with respect to emails, I can only speak for myself, I send the board of selectmen emails when I have something of informational value to you.
Yeah.
That I don't feel can wait until the next meeting.
Well, it's a blanket email to us, and, and that's, that's a.
Right, for the most part, it doesn't require a response, you know, I'd say.
That's correct, I don't, we, I just mean.
Nine times out of ten, it doesn't need any response.
And if it does need a response, I'm just letting you know, I don't send.
You're responding just to me.
I call her.
I usually, you just reply.
I, I call Helen and ask her, did I misunderstand this, that you just say yes or no, and that's the end of the conversation.
Sometimes I could roll in in it if, if it's an agenda item, because I know he sets the agenda also.
Right, and the reason why I do that is because in sending one email, you all get the same exact information.
Right.
If I were to have the time and make five phone calls, there's no guarantee I'm gonna say the exact same thing verbatim to each and every one of you.
Right, the way you do it right now.
And I don't want one of you to say, well, I think she told me, and, you know, she didn't tell me that part of it, so, one email, you all get the same thing.
I could, I, I do like the autotraer, I do like that.
I, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I just sometimes.
Well, I think what you're saying, Jennifer, yes, it is, something has to be, um, how can you say, more productive on how it's being handled, I think what you're trying to say.
Mm-hmm, but this is something that comes up every now and again, it's not like, oh, this, you know what I mean? It's the one, this is the one time, I mean, there, there have been incidents over the years that, you know, like, okay, this isn't going well between these two departments, or these two individuals, or this group of people.
Well, and that's something that you need to bring in front of the executive secretary, have it put on the agenda, or, or send it to the chairman of the board and have them put it on the agenda, and then discuss it.
Right.
I mean.
It just, I, I just, I don't think it's helping, the people who are volunteering, most of us are volunteering, with no money involved, and it becomes a headache and a hassle. To, 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 to be a community service.
Unappreciated too.
Yeah, and I, I don't want that to be the feeling, um, and I'm not saying it's a consistent thing that occurs within the community, but when it does happen, it, it sits and resonates.
This is, this is outside the realm of residents per se, it's other committees.
Yeah, it's, it's our inner workings of our community.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that we're the best that we can be, and I'm, you know, and, and it bothers me at times that, that it occurs. And I think we can do better, and I, and, and from now on, I will just reply back that, put it as an agenda item.
That's fine.
I prefer not to be, you know, they.
That's fine.
I will just make a blanket statement, but that's where I'm coming from. You know, I know we don't have a procedure, informal communication, I, I get all that, I, I understand the emailing guidelines, but I think sometimes a deep breath, you know? My husband gets the twenty-four hour rule, if I'm mad, I wait twenty-four hours and see if it still angers me, I mean, I think that's a good policy, yours is overnight, Bob, I could, you know? It takes a little longer for me to settle down, but, um, I don't know. I, I will be, based on the feedback I'm hearing, I'll kinda follow suit and do my own thing, and, but I just want you to know where I'm coming from, cause of, the overall picture or feeling.
I just wanna, the reason why I said it that way, Jennifer, is I wanna make sure I don't miss something or misunderstand you.
Mm-hmm.
When you came out with, you know, or somebody comes out with, I wanna make sure I get, you know, the, the right language, and, and it's not through an email where, like you said, somebody writes it one way, but they're not writing it the way they really, and it gets all mixed up, and it gets ugly, as you said, you know, and, and.
Yeah. And, and, and sometime, you know, unfortunately, sometimes, you know, what looks like, you know, trying to help this procedure is inter- you know, butting in or interfering.
Mm-hmm.
And that, well, we can do it ourselves, and why are you, and then it becomes this, you know? And I think sometimes, like, the, the intent, the intent of the email is, is not always followed through when it's read and it's acted upon, or replied to. So, I just think, I just, just acknowledging that this is a problem, that this is something that comes up now and again, and that, um.
It needs to be addressed differently.
In my opinion.
Right, and I agree with you.
So, that's all, that's all I wanted to.
I, I recognize that, I'm sensitive to it, but, I don't have an answer, real answer.
No, I, I know there isn't a real answer, I know that we weren't gonna decide anything, I just, I think opening the conversation and having it there, but I am going to take, um, you know, more active cognitive, like, awareness of it, and, and noting it, and, and, you know, things of that sort, because I think it is, I think it is an issue. On the second thing that's not on here, when is the report of the town hall coming?
Um, we're, we have the draft, um, we have gone through it, we have put our comments together, and we're sending it back to the engineer this week.
Okay.
Um, we're hoping October twenty-ninth, I believe, is the, um, the, the date that we're hoping to get the final by.
That's a Tuesday, right?
Uh, Wednesday.
I'm reading.
And, um, Mr. Weiss here, with respect to the emails, um, my feeling is that every email sent and received in this building, or by any municipal official, is public. So my suggestion would be to selectman wing, if she has a problem, she should print it, make five copies of it, put it on the agenda, and we discuss it at a meeting. It's public information anyway.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And give the individual who sent it, or who received it, the opportunity to discuss it.
Well, that's what I mean, when you, when you start taking one email and pulling it, and that now it becomes a personnel issue. And with a personnel issue, then we need to follow different guidelines as far as calling them in, or, do you know what I mean? If we're gonna start, cause you, you start over that threshold of, um, performance, you know what I mean? We can't just talk in open meeting without that person being known, notified and hear.
No, you could, personnel matters, um, is open session, you, you could do that in open session.
Without notifying them, that their email is going to be picked apart and looked at?
It would be on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Because I know in the past, we've been sitting and talking about people, and people drift into the personnel area, and people like, you need to be careful of what you say, so. I'm not one for going on TV and picking people apart, I think there's a time and a place for that, and I think there's.
I don't think that's what our intent is, is our intent is to try to help the people or understand where they're coming from, to try to, you know, find the right avenue, or whatever, whatever the cause is, I think that's what you're trying to say, you know?
Let's, let's, let's move on.
Yes, I'm just, I just, like I said, I just wanted it out there, and that I, I feel it's an issue.
He, um, you voted to close the warrant, um, salt.
No, we're down to you.
The warrant. Well, you, you voted to sign the election warrant, state election warrant, right?
Um.
Yep.
No, I don't have a vote on that.
No. No, you know, it's a special town law, but not the state.
Okay, I, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, sign the state election warrant to your packet.
So moved, second.
Row.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The, uh, back to the members' forum, I'm gonna hold back on that, um, until the time we have a full board.
Thank you.
Done?
Thank you.
We're going to, uh, our next regular meeting will be October fifteenth, the.
We're going to, uh, our next regular meeting will be October fifteenth at, on two thousand thirteen at seven o'clock. Uh, we will, uh, sign warrants at this point and then we'll, uh, adjourn the meeting.
We looking for a motion to sign the warrants?
Yes.
Motion to sign the warrants?
No, you've already voted to approve the warrants. You're just signing everything that you've already voted on.
Do we approve that?
Okay.
Is that why you're making pardon?
No. Nope, I was, I'm, I was trying to digest that October fifteenth, eight, right?
You got big plans?
No, I, just, I live on here, it's not.
Do you rack up your freaking flyer points?
I do.
Do you get to use them?
I do. This is.
That's a perk.
It's not me either. I find so good.
That's how I got to Disney.
Yeah.
A friend of mine sold me, sold me tickets for how far I used their points.
Uh, nice.
I get the cash, I get the deal on.
Right.
Get the five hundred bucks.
Nice.
For my, for the five hundred bucks.
Right.
I gave all my way to like make a wish in that.
Oh, nice. I have a wish to go to Disney again, Joe.
The last one you already signed. The last one, there's three of them, you've already signed one.
I have a six AM flight tomorrow out of Boston.
Where are you going?
To Raleigh again. Six AM.
What's the weather there around?
It's pretty nice today, though.
Like just, how about like in the middle of winter?
Hmm, you can get down there.
It can.
At least we don't have a dusting.
No. Yeah, I was gonna say. It's a little like it is in Tennessee. And I'm the same. Playing there. Not tropical, but. My sister lived in San Diego for, oh god, twenty years. She came home with a boy.
What? Yeah.
It was like sixty, maybe fifty degrees. And he's in the house with millions of kids.
Yeah.
My sister's my little G- child. But he, my boyfriend was like, don't go above sixty-eight. And the four guys like huddled in the corner. And he's like, it's so hot out here. And it was like, we're running around in shorts and a sweatshirt and.
The football game yesterday in San Diego, it was a hundred and ten on the field.
Well, yeah, that's, that's where she lives, San Diego. What was it last night in, uh?
I didn't go. It was nicely placed in my living room.
It depends on your seats there.
Chief, chief said it was a little cold. He was there.
If you go up in that upper layer, that's where we had our season tickets. That wind comes across that year. It can be really cool.
Want me to recycle you a chunk?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Aye.